It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. The first item is the approval of the agenda, and I just, I do notice that Rhonda, you do have a second position. We'll just include that in item number two. And also, Brian, if I could just clarify one more time that under the consent, the Solutions meeting room number five is not of concern with the moving of those office spaces?
No, Mr. Chair, they are not renewing their 3,000 square foot that we've been looking at. Lakes and Prairies has leased this meeting room five in the past. They're giving that up, and Solutions is renting it to have a presence in the building.
Very good. All right, thank you.
You're giving up the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Space in favor of the first floor.
Okay.
I want to approve the agenda with the changes.
Okay, we have a motion as their second. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. We'll move into citizens to be heard. Do you have any citizens to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? Sure.
Greg Strong from Clay County Trailblazers. Was the agenda changed? Are we still approving the permit for MinDOT today?
I do not see a permit for MinDOT on here.
Okay.
Was there supposed to be one?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Dave asked me to give him a call, and I've tried him a couple times. So I will try him again right now.
All right, so I'll tell you what, why don't, so you're here in support of a permit? Does that what?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I'll tell you what, can you, can you just hold on? We will, we'll leave open the ability to discuss that.
Okay.
But unfortunately, you might have to sit here for a little while while we go through some other things.
Okay, all right.
We'll get you in sometime before the end of the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's not a long meeting, is it?
Yeah. Okay, any other citizens to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from November seventh.
Move approval.
And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, then we have some donations to recognize here, and we have three of them this morning. One is from a, D. Hassan. That was for $35, and it was purposes donated to the Restorative Justice Program. The next one is Russell. That's all I have. And that one was also $35 to Restorative Justice. And then Webster, C. Webster, for $70 to the Restorative Justice Program. And we wanted to thank those people for those contributions to that organization. Okay, then we'll move on to our eight thirty-five item, request to fill vacancy in Child Protection Welfare Services, and then we also have a financial worker position that's come up.
Yes.
Good morning, Rhonda.
Good morning. Okay, so we had another resignation, one of our child protection workers. She's moving to Grafton and following a boyfriend. Darn it, we just couldn't keep her. So she's submitted her resignation, and we'd like to replace her position. She was on step three, grade seventeen, step three of the grid. So wage calculator would indicate just for this year, given we're so late in the year, we'd have a $2,500 savings for this year, and then a little bit larger for next year in terms of the budget, but...
And this one, according to your memo, was critical. That couldn't be shifted to others to...
Oh, absolutely. Our numbers continue to be large in our child protection, child welfare area. Our placements, even though we've seen some decrease, but our child protection cases continue to come in, and we continue to have large caseloads, so we really need the position.
I'm going to approve. Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, well, then we'll move on to your financial worker position.
Okay. One thing I don't think I mentioned on this child protection one is this position is revenue generating as well based on the activities of that caseload, so we do collect some revenue to help pay for that position. The second one, which is an agenda added item, yesterday we did get a resignation in our financial unit, so this is for a financial worker. Again, this employee's been with us, I think, close to five years, but she's moving closer to home and closer to her family, so we would like to replace her as well. That position is 50% funded from federal financial participation, and she has been administering our adult, public, state, and federal programs. The budget savings for her, we did the wage calculator we did for 2018, assuming that her last day will be mid-December, and then we likely wouldn't get anybody on board probably until that first week in January. Budget savings would be a little over $11,000 for her position.
So a question maybe for Darren. When we, when you provide this information to us on savings, does that include a time where the position is vacant? Does it include dollars when it's vacant?
Um, yes, because...
They're still being paid in one fashion or another, I suppose.
Yes, they get a cash payout for their vacation payment for the inclusive, well, ten month, business salary.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure you understood that. Questions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, the, you do have in your packet, it's just, was not placed on the agenda, a Highway Department agenda for today, and it is the permit resolution requested.
Oh, okay.
So at some point in time, if you could ask for a motion to add that to the agenda, that would be appreciated.
All right, well, we can do that this time.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the permit request to the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the, Joel, we also have a vacancy in the maintenance department. Good morning. Good morning, Joel.
Yes, Scott Handegard had turned in his resignation. He'd been here 10 years, just shy of 10 years, so he's done a good job for us, and he, his last day will be November 28th, so I'm requesting to fill his vacant position starting in grade eleven, step one. And his cost savings, we ran it in 2018, assuming we won't have anybody on board probably around the first, and his annual savings is around $12,407.
Joel, is this, how many do you have that, or have the boilers, is this, is he one of those?
Yeah, he's one of them, and so when we do advertise for this, we advertise for the ability to earn your boiler's license within a three-year period, because it takes three years. Or if, so we don't necessarily require they have a boiler's license, because there's enough of us, and we have kind of an apprentice program. But we do require that they work towards it and have it in a three-year period, so...
I just, I wanted to be sure of that, and I'm glad to hear you say there's enough of you, because...
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's some areas, I know, even that other outfit that we're affiliated with, Prairie Lakes, where they have boilers, they have a hard time having, getting any, so...
Yeah, currently I have mine, and then we have, we have three others, and then we have one that's actually just start, just ready to get his, so...
Very good.
We're kind of on it, we're kind of spread out nicely, which is nice, so...
Very good, all right.
I have a general question, just in terms of budgeting, and not necessarily because of this. With the last couple that we've just approved, you know, $17,000 in savings for the next year, per se. Typically, what is our policy with that, when it comes to the end of the year, and say there is a $40,000 savings in staffing budgeted time? Is that dollars that will then be only billed out as actual, or is that $40,000 that a department can use in any other, in another area if approved? I mean, that's maybe a question for Brian.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Mujo, I can, I can answer that. That's how you end up with a little extra in your reserves each year. Now, if the position happens to be very short, and I'll use Joe's case for example, if he had to hire some temporary help to fill in because of those vacancies, he could do some of that on a temporary basis, but generally, that's how you end up with a little additional in your reserves.
Thank you.
All right.
Move to approve the position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. I think at this time, I think we'll, Tim, if you don't, I think we're going to take this addition. It shouldn't take us very long with this one here. Was Dave going to be here?
Yes, he was, Mr. Chair. He and Eric were on their way over.
All right, well, and if he's on his way, then we'll, then we'll wait. I was hoping we didn't have to make...
Will you grab Tim? He just stepped out.
No, Tim just walked out. Okay, sure, yeah, if you want to get ready there, this is, we are going to be looking at the flood study along the Buffalo River. I got some handouts for you. All color, looks good.
Yes, Buffalo River flood restudy. We had an issue with this ever since the last, I mapped it back in 2012. It really came to light when there was some, some new commercial development proposed out there at Outland Recreation. They'd like to build a bunch more buildings, and in order to do that, they would have had to broaden more, fill the building it'd be worth, so... So earlier this year, the board did authorize up to $75,000 to be, to be spent on a restudy of this area. As you can see on the map, it goes from, familiar with the trestle, just east of State Highway nine, on the south side of the road where the pumpkin patch is. The area that's right behind it. The study area goes from that point over to County Road nineteen, I believe it is, just north of Glendon. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how it all works. So I'm going to explain to you what the study has done.
Sure.
Thanks, Tim. Morning, Commissioners. My name is Greg Thompson with Civil Engineer with Houston Engineering. Tim asked us to help out with the flood insurance study, so I'll give you just a little bit of a background on the Buffalo River, and click on the flood insurance study, it's very brief, and then talk about why the revision was needed, and then kind of the next steps forward, so... Houston Engineering conducted the Buffalo River flood insurance study back in 2008, and the extent, I guess, primary river reaches were on the Buffalo River and then the south branch of the Buffalo River. And I've got a zoomed-in view coming up here, but as Tim mentioned, the extent of the new study goes all the way upstream on the Buffalo River to where that railroad trestle is, east of, east of Glendon. The original study only went up to Highway ten, and so there were some assumptions made there by FEMA to how to properly map that area upstream. We'll get into that in a little bit. The, one thing to point out is technology's changed quite a bit over the years, and the flood insurance study for the Buffalo River, which is then used for the Clay County study in 2012, was done with a robust program but relatively simple. It's called a steady-state analysis, where for each flood frequency, 10, 25, 50, 100 here, there's one profile, so it's, here's your water service elevation. And now with the technology, we're using the unsteady state model, and there's even a 2D model, which is more complex. But in unsteady model, you actually take a look at the flood hydrograph as it comes in and goes down, makes a better use of accounting for floodplain storage and also breakouts, which is very critical on the Buffalo River. This is a, kind of a, a view of the study area from FEMA's map service center, and the, the blue area there shown is floodplain. And then we've got extended from Highway ten all the way up two miles to the north, and then along the...
Oh, sure.
Does it, does the curve shift a little? Perfect. So there's the floodplain that extends from Highway ten all the way up two miles to the north, and then a floodway corridor defined along the river reach itself. And are a lot of you familiar with the difference from floodplain and floodways?
Flood fringe, probably.
Flood fringe, yeah, pretty well, pretty well versed on that. So in Minnesota, it's how far you can encroach on that floodplain to cause that half a foot rise. Which in a, in a typical cross-section scenario is relatively straightforward process, but taking a look at a transect across this Buffalo River floodplain, it's, it's a little different. So looking here is Highway ten on the very left side of the chart, and then the Buffalo River is here, and then anything that doesn't, you know, can't be contained within that Buffalo River channel is going to be breaking out and flowing to the north. But in the simple steady-state analysis, that water service elevation was projected all the way across, which is, could potentially be elevated water source elevations on the north side. Another study area, as Tim mentioned, was up, upstream of Highway ten, kind of in that Alder Recreation area, the pumpkin patch area. And here's the same scenario where the water service elevation is, the previous study started at Highway ten, but that water surface from FEMA was, once the analysis was done, sent to FEMA. They took that elevation and projected it to the west. And so this water service elevation in that Alder Recreation area is approximately three to four feet above Highway ten. That's the way the flood insurance study is right now, and with the new study, that water service drops a little over four feet. So it's right around that, that Highway ten area. It still provides a good representation of the floodplain. It helps us explain the flood risk, but it's not, you know, it's not, you know, unreasonable.
How many of you have ever seen Highway ten go underwater?
Never.
I've never seen it either, and when I, when we started looking real close, when we started getting development proposals out there, and we saw that it was four feet above Highway ten elevation, we just, we just couldn't figure out how they did their mapping.
So then Tim had asked us to start on the Buffalo River, LOMAR, letter of map revision. So we began that early in 2017. As Tim mentioned, it begins down on Clay County Highway nineteen, north of Glendon, extends upstream to the railroad track. We did run the full gamut of events, 10, 50, 100, 500 here. We also defined that floodway corridor and submitted that to FEMA in October 11th, so...
Because of railroad track, because that's, that's so high there, is that, is that like a natural or a... It's almost like a gate, right?
It acts as a bottleneck for whoever's coming through. The tracks themselves don't make any difference.
No, but just the fact where they, how, the berm they sit on, or whatever.
You have the water funnels right through the bridge.
Yeah.
So this map shows a lot of information. It shows the, the effect of floodplain and floodway, and then it shows the proposed floodway and floodplain. And all the elevations are there, so one person looks at a specific area, they can kind of see what's happening. But if you remember the map I showed earlier, that almost the entire two miles of land was flooded out, and now you'll see some of these aerial images showing through. So I think I counted this morning, there were roughly a half a dozen properties that will be coming out of the floodplain. So a lot of farmsteads up in here, and there's one over here that we'll look at that could potentially be in now that wasn't in before. Okay, and it could possibly be out with further definition of the elevations around that structure, so... One thing that's very unique with this is defining that floodway. So on a typical floodplain, if you encroach it, the water service goes up and there's your elevation. But here, as you encroach it, now more water breaks out, which sends water into a different area. So we had defined these red areas as breakout corridors to be set aside to convey that water. And those, all those floodway areas are away from structures, so that...
Tim, would that be similar to where the red breaks out up north in Oakport?
It's, it's similar.
It acts actually an old river channel.
Yeah, it's, it's similar, but that's much more defined up north. I mean, the breakouts here, there is really not defined channels for them. I mean, they just break out into little kinds of fields.
So that's, it's just elevation-based now?
The locations where the breakouts were defined were elevation-based, and then it was some engineering judgment to suggest how that actually gets conveyed across the section of land.
So the, so to me, the red would, would fill before the blue?
Yes, yeah, if, if everything was encroached, yeah.
One unfortunate aspect of this mapping, and we talked about it last year, year and a half ago, and we were dealing with the property up there on 15th Avenue and trying to fix it. At that point in time, we were saying, well, we can fix it, or we could spend money and have this done, and we went ahead and fixed it, and now according to this map...
Oh, it come up, yeah.
And then here's a zoomed-in, just like you have on your, on your desk, on that upstream area, so...
But that still shows there's water on Highway ten, right?
Yep.
That's in the median.
What's that?
Correct.
Median.
In the median of Highway ten.
Yeah, previously, the 100-year passed all the way across.
Thank you.
So I guess the next steps, in a, in a relatively simple LOMAR process, it can get accepted and signed off, and away we go. It kind of is somewhat subjective from FEMA's standpoint as far as how much public input is needed and how far we carry it as far as notifying landowners, how long of review process there'll be, and if there's an appeal period, things like that. So we submitted on October 11th, so sometime in that first week of January, we should be expecting to hear comments from them. A lot of times, they'll have something smaller that needs more information, and then they'll get it processed to finish their work, so... Probably a three to six-month timeframe.
It's, it's taken longer than we expected, but...
So out of this work, we could see potentially six residential properties come out of the floodplain and maybe one go in?
At least six coming out, and there's one or two that look like they might go in, but we need to talk about that, because there are ways we can ensure that nobody gets put in.
Right.
It wasn't there before.
Right, so if they're really close, you know, I mean, is it worth talking to the watershed? You know, they have, they had, a ringdike program can also take somebody through a LOMAR process, can it take, take somebody out of a floodplain?
Not individual ringdikes.
No?
No, because they need to be basically sponsored and operated by a public entity.
Well, that's why I said the watershed, the watershed did that in Anderson addition, I think, up there, didn't they?
They've done those ringdikes, but none of those ringdikes that I'm aware of are certified.
Flood-certified, okay.
And Anderson Acres wasn't actually in a floodplain, but it took a lot of overland flooding from the east, is why the Buffalo put that ringdike around them.
We could look at the elevations and actually survey the buildings and see what that elevation looks like.
Well, it sure would be nice to do what we can to see those other two don't end up in...
Especially if it's only one or two.
Yeah, we don't impact people that haven't been impacted, I mean, aren't impacted by it. The other thing is, we've, we've got a couple of development issues waiting on results from this. We've got a cell tower that is looking at going into the location there by, of a recreation. And when we first formatted them and we gave them the elevations that they needed, but their equipment at, it was about eight feet higher than the ground level was, and they weren't really interested in that, so they're waiting on this number, and we also have a residential structure out there that's waiting on...
Well, according to this, their, that whole area is still in the 100-year?
Still in the 100-year, but there's a big difference between 100-year at 948 and 100-year at 943. I mean...
Much less fill required.
Much, much less fill requirements for, for elevation purposes, so...
Well, so, so, yeah, you're talking about being able to build in, in the floodplain.
Yeah.
It still doesn't, it still doesn't take them out of the requirement for flood insurance, does it?
No, even if they fill, unless they do a letter of map revision or a letter, map amendment on fill, that's still...
I think that's kind of what I was getting at, too, with this other two.
For flood insurance, but flood insurance would be less expensive.
Yeah, okay.
And I know Outland Recreation is interested in building a number of new buildings out there, so...
All right, so do you, any action you need from us today, or is this more of a...
Uh, this was just an informational, it's been going on, and we ought to let you know where it was at.
And if you can keep this updated on, on the response from FEMA, and if there's... So do they have an open comment period, or something that, right now going on, and...
Uh, not yet, but there will likely be a, basically, appeal or comment period.
So the comment period, would that, would that allow those folks who benefit to... I, because we've had some of them coming to us saying, we've never flooded, but we're in the so-called floodplain. Would it give them the opportunity then to put something into FEMA to back up what you're doing?
I don't know if it'd really be needed.
Okay.
Yeah, if they're not impacted by it, it shouldn't be a question.
But if the other two residences weren't supported by, and understanding that they would likely appeal and say, is this right?
Okay, but it wouldn't impact the others?
No.
Okay, you're good.
We're trying to keep any adverse impact to a minimum, and when we look at any houses that might be impacted, we really don't want them.
The biggest thing, I think, is just to understand that what the flood risk is. You know, I'd hate to go and say that it's one way or another and have them be misled in thinking that they don't have flood, flood risk, but I think everyone in the valley knows there's a flood risk.
Everywhere that's west of the beach ridges has got flood risk depending on the circumstances.
And they get worse and worse, it seems like, so... All right, well, thank you for your update, unless there's any questions?
If you have any other questions, you can attack me.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now we'll go on to our approval of the MinDOT limited use for the snowmobile trails.
Hey, good morning, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, what I'm handing out is, Dave informed me that there was a new resolution that he received from MinDOT this morning, and we have copied that. We're replacing it with a limited use permit.
Very good. All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Dave, do you want to start off?
Yeah, back in 2002, and I don't know if the Highway Department was involved or not, I was the assistant at the time, but there was a limited-use permit that was approved by Clay County. And essentially what it is, it's kind of like some of the small-city grants that we do, like a TAP grant for City of Barnesville, for example. We are the sponsoring agency, so when the snowmobile clubs in our county have a crossing of a chunk highway, there's a permit that's put in place, and the county is actually the sponsor for the, for this limited-use permit. And like you said, it was approved by our county in 2002, and they're 10-year permits. And I don't know, Greg, you know, do they automatically renew themselves? Because I don't remember in 2012. And I think what's kind of why we're here today is the club has made a little change in your, in their route or their, their crossing in the city of Holly. or their, their crossing in the City of Holly, for instance, is where the change was. And then that enacted MinDOT to alter the permit a little bit with that crossing location. And I'll pass around, here's the, here's the permit that was approved in two thousand and two. And what it is, is it's got some language, and then it's got some aerial views of each of the one, each of the crossings. And I guess, uh, being that you haven't had a chance to take a look at this, uh, maybe we could pass a contingent out upon maybe legal's review of the permit itself, but I don't think it's too much different than the limited use permits. There's other ones that we approved, too. There is one for a trail in the City of Barnesville. Barnesville did a little trail along trunk highway thirty-four, and we were the sponsor for that project, and we approved that limited use permit as well. But there's a, there's a resolution, uh, that Brian just passed around, there's a limited use permit. And then Eric and Greg worked together putting the aerials together, that's part of the exhibit for this. And then there's also a comprehensive map of the entire county. And I think, uh, that's just the club's, uh, map that you see out in different businesses around the county that show, uh, I think essentially there's three clubs, is that right, in Clay County? And Greg's club actually is kind of just the lead person for putting together this limited use permit, which covers all the trails in the county, all three clubs, so. Uh, as you can see, there's about half a dozen different crossings, uh, on trunk highway ten, thirty-two, highway nine, highway seventy-five, I ninety-four, and I think that's it.
All right.
But I had requested the permit, and I just got it this morning, and, um, if you feel comfortable, maybe we could have Jenny review it, and if it, if it passes, the blessings on our legal counsel.
Okay.
Do these trails have anything to do with Harlan Trail? I mean, is, when you said something about going through Holly, uh, the Harlan Trail was thinking about going right through Holly. Does this include some of those crossings, or are we...
Yes, I can answer that. Um, so, part of the realignment was some land was purchased or developing south of highway ten, and that's where our trails went, and we wanted to align our trails with the Harlan Trail, what the comprehensive plan was there now anyway. And part of that, they secured at the highway, the Silver Lake Road, it was like county thirty-one crossing there. So they already had that in place, so we just moved our trail back over to there to cross at that crossing, which is, you know, designed for the Harlan Trail, they already put some of that in, in the play anyway. And now we're just continuing along highway ten to head west out of town. Because MinDOT wants us to run, uh, one-way trails, so we're not going against traffic on the major highways. So, so that was the change there, so...
So, west of Holly, then, is it on, does the main trail south of highway ten?
Correct.
All the way to the Buffalo, uh...
Correct, we go south out of Holly, along Silver Lake, yep, just south of, just north of rural tract, pardon me. And then we head west from there, and then south to Barnesville from there, so... All the way along, Silver Lake Road all the way down.
Here's the, the large map that will also accompany this, this permit as well. So I think, there's the City of Holly right there.
Yeah, and a lot of these are just, we're just cutting across the road, like, uh, you know, from Georgetown, we're going into Georgetown from Felton, you know, we're just crossing highway seventy-five perpendicular, so they want permits for that, too, because, you know, we are utilizing the right of ways.
Sure, okay.
For the most part, the permit only authorizes crossings, I believe, right?
Correct, and highway thirty-four by Barnesville.
Oh, yep.
East of Barnesville, utilize highway thirty-four.
Sure. Well, if there's, uh, no other questions, I think it would be appropriate to pass that subject to, uh, our legal counsel's approval.
May I motion to approve the contract per legal review?
Second. We have a motion second on the resolution? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of us, same say? All right.
Thank you.
Dave, you'll work with Jenny then on...
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into our committee reports. Last week, you started to my left, so this week we'll start from my right.
Thank you. Last week, I had a Minnesota task force meeting in regards to hearing the concerns of the Minnesota members of that. Also, talked a little bit about the technical recommendations. Clay County is not serving on that technical committee. I did request that the engineering department was there, so Eric did attend that meeting, so we were covered in representation there. So I, uh, continue to think that the process is good going forward, and we'll see what we can come up with. Last week, I also attended a MetroCog meeting. Basically, we approved month-end reports, had a update from, uh, finance, uh, public, the CPA, who's doing that financially, MetroCog's in really good standing, so that was good. We talked a little bit about staffing levels. Uh, the projects in the FM area have warranted another planner for a significant amount of years, and there's, uh, legacy dollars that were set aside several years ago. And, uh, the thought is that we could hire a entry-level planning position, uh, using those funds to keep the effect from the entities at a, a lower level, um, to cover the projects that, that are going on in, in the area. So that was something that we did recommend to kind of look, look into more. Part of the issue is that, uh, the senior-level planners are spending a lot of time at, at outreach meetings, uh, but still, there are some that they really should be going to significantly, uh, like Dilworth and Holly and, and the Barnesville areas. And that if we hired someone at an entry level, the senior planners could continue work on the projects, and then we could have someone that's more of a liaison between the entities. So, all of us felt that was something that would really be a good thing. We also talked about Michael Maddox, who's been named the interim executive director, just kind of seeing the status of the agency going forward. And, like I said, we continue to feel that they're, they're in a really good position going forward, so... Yesterday, I also attended the township officers' meeting with the rest of you, and I appreciate the presence of our staff at that meeting. The collaboration, uh, between staff and rural representation is really important, and, and that dialogue, I think, is, is good to hear their concerns as we go forward with policy. So I appreciate the invitation to that, but that concludes my reports.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Waylon?
I also was at the township, uh, meeting, and Jenny reported on that. And diversion, public outreach, and diversion authority board meeting last week. Uh, pretty much updates, meetings are certainly much shorter now that, uh, the work has stopped for the time being. I had a greater far from warning, EDC, uh, executive committee meeting. We had a joint meeting with the, uh, chamber board and, uh, discussed some ongoing issues we've got there, and that was it for me.
Mr. Gross?
Uh, last Tuesday, I attended a MOLA township meeting. They had a big concern with, um, gophers on the roads and stuff, like they're really breaking up roads and stuff, uh, there weren't a lot of holes there. I was going to bring that up at the township meeting yesterday, and I forgot to do that. But I think that's, I don't know, with Dave, with Dave left now, you know. Then that's something we, in our next highway tracking meeting, something that we're going to have to talk about that, whether we're involved in that, if that's, if that's a township deal, or if that's a county deal, or work together on it.
I know back in my days, at the township level, it was, it was something that the townships did. They were, they had a bounty.
Pay little kids to trap them.
Kind of had a little bounty out there, paid so much for tail or something.
Well, they still, they still have that program.
They still do that in Holy Cross.
They still have that program, which is three dollars for a pair of feet, you know, and, uh, but, uh...
Three dollars, wow. Well, we can, uh, I think we're meeting today, I think, so...
That's a money-making thing there, but you're generally going to get there.
Need a diamond.
We've got a couple of boys you can take.
I don't know when, I don't know when hunting season is open for that, though, so it's just... Okay, from there, I went to Wildrise Watershed Board, uh, there, Mark Harless was sworn in as a member of the, the Wildrise Watershed Board, and, um, he also had a presentation from a group of kids from the Norman County, uh, east, um, on the water quality, how, what they're doing about studying water quality, and it's an interesting presentation those kids gave. Historical Society, Wednesday night, uh, working on the budget. Also, we appointed Chanel Moore, who's a new member of the Historical Society now, and just a routine, other than that, was mostly routine business going on there. And again, I was all, also at the township meeting yesterday, and, um, I guess I brought up a little bit, uh, started the concern about, um, land being brought up, uh, bought up by the Nature Conservatory, Nadina Arenfessens forever, and I think, I don't know, I think Jenny and I are ready on a committee that we can probably expand that thing. We'll have to talk about that some more, I guess, to see what we want to... Is that a township deal, is it county deal, whatever, but I think that needs some more discussion.
It kind of reminds me, Commissioner Gross, of, um, a few years ago, when Commissioner Waller from your district was on our board, uh, he proposed a no-net loss, uh, type of an ordinance or something, and, and I think as we researched that, I'd, I'd have to go back and see, but it seems to me that there were some legal issues in doing that, uh, with, that conflicted with Minnesota law or something, but...
Well, I don't think there's a net loss in some of this, because they're giving, they're paying more for the property than it says that. We're getting more back on pill payments, but the deal is, what are they doing with the land is being a concern.
I think, I think the no-net loss was more to do with, um, how much, how much land is, is actually leaving the private sector to public. It was more of an issue in that regard, as it was to how much we collect, whether it's in tax dollars or pill payments.
I think an immediate thing, though, that we can do is, we get notified when one of those agencies is in the process of dialogue between, uh, entity, and I think, uh, you know, as a county board, we can then for, make sure we're forwarding that to the township officers. Because I don't, I don't know if necessarily that, that they're receiving that. I think by statute, they're required to notify the, the county.
Yeah, because I, I look back at mine a little bit, oh, excuse me. I look back at mine, it's September twenty-fifth, I got a notice of some land being transferred over that. I mean, so I know we're getting the notice, and I don't know if that's going to the townships or not, you know, and it's...
One of the things that I, you know, in listening to quite a few of their concerns was the, uh, status of the land once it's in their hands, and, and what's done and what isn't done over long periods of time. And I don't know if there's something that, that could be reviewed in our land use ordinance or something that, that, you know, because they were concerned, for example, how some of these acreages go twenty-five years without being burned or whatever, and it just didn't, it can be a real potential hazard, according to those township supervisors. So I don't know if it's something that could be researched there, but they, they brought up some really valid things.
Yeah, I think weed control is a big concern, you know, and stuff.
I think weed control in the entire county right now, and I'm not, you know, belittling that concern, but the reality that the weeds in Clay County right now are worse than they were five years ago is quite true. I mean, it's just, yes, it may be if there's not a proper, uh, grass management plan, that it gets worse, but the reality is, we have a lot more weeds in our ditches than we, we ever have seen. So, I mean, part of that is on us.
Well, that's good, you know, I'm glad you're pursuing that, and whatever we can do as a board, and make sure we keep us up to date on that.
Yeah, I'll keep going, working on that. Okay, that was all of my means.
Mr. Ane?
I attended the township officers' meeting yesterday with everyone, and that was my whole report.
Okay, very good. All right, I had, uh, last week, I was able to attend without a conflict for once the, uh, joint, joint powers board with the Red River Basin Commission, and that was last Wednesday. It was a really good meeting, um, a lot of, uh, Lance Yoi was there and gave an update on the presentation. Originally, I think Terry Jacobson, who's also on that board, was going to give an update on the task force work that Commissioner Mojo is on, but Lance Yoi gave a report on his report that he gave, which I thought was very good. I, I was able to watch that. And, um, I had an opportunity, uh, I served as, um, an alternate on the basin commission, and Stephanie Marinowski from Wilkin County is the voting member, and she was also present, and, and, you know, we had a good discussion about what's going on with the task force, and, and I think both Stephanie and I were both optimistic, um, that, you know, the concerns of Wilkin County should be able to be met in this process, so... So that was, uh, it was good to be able to get back to that meeting, I hadn't been there for a while. And I also had, as, uh, Commissioner Waylon mentioned, the flood diversion public outreach meeting. And again, uh, pretty much the, we gave updates on the task force. Commissioner Mojo, I, I, um, I presented the concern that both you and I had heard from some people about, uh, not knowing the location, the when and wheres of your task force meetings, uh, because they're public, and there was interest in people wanting to be there. So I, I raised that at the public outreach meeting, and again, at the, um, actual diversion authority meeting. And so there's going to be some more emphasis to try to let the public be aware of where those... And it's my understanding that it's, the last three meetings that are scheduled are going to switch back and forth between the same locations of Mord State and, uh, the Farber Dome, so... Okay, so that, uh, that was that, and, um, on, then Thursday, we did have the flood diversion authority meeting, and as Commissioner Waylon said, there's not a lot going on. Uh, two issues that were important in Cass County is that the, um, County Road seventeen is back open. I don't know if any of our residents use that, I'm assuming that some do on occasion. And the County eighty-one road raise is open, they didn't get to complete the hard surfacing of it because of the change in the weather, but it's, I think they've got that open now at a forty mile per hour, um, speed limit. Then also, um, again, just for anybody who may be watching, who is interested in the work that's being done for the task force regarding, uh, alternatives or changes to the FM diversion, uh, can, um, go to fmdiversion.com, and they can have links to all of the, uh, the videos of all the meetings, and all the handouts and everything are available there. Uh, I think it's good that's, that's available. Uh, then, I did also attend, then, the township officers' meeting, and I do want to, um, I'm going to single out some people here, and I want to give them credit, and I want to start with our administrator, Brian Berg, uh, for being there, as well as, um, uh, all of our commissioners attended. Uh, our emergency services director, Brian Green, was there, our engineer, Dave Overbow, our sheriff, Bill Burke, was, and, um, then we also had Ron DePorter, Catherine Kay, Kirk Rosenberger, Tim Magnuson, and Justin, our, um, assistant jail administrator was there, and, uh, I hope I didn't...
Mark Sloan.
Oh, uh, Mark, Mark Sloan.
Eric.
Kirk, I did, I did mention Kirk.
Derek and Brian.
Yeah, and, uh, and Brian, yeah. So all of those, um, they, they did a good job in giving the reports to their various, um, departments in what they do. And that concludes my report. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, real quick, just, uh, I apologize for the confusion on the agenda. What had happened was, uh, we printed an agenda for the board packets, and then, uh, we received highways, and, uh, the agenda was updated to include highways, but unfortunately, you've got the original one, so I apologize for that, that's my error. And, um, so that created a little confusion, the, the information got in the packet, just that the top agenda sheet did not get updated. The, um, just Darren and I have met a few times last week, you know, typical, as I report on a regular basis, personnel issues that go on on a regular basis that we discuss. Had a, a, a hour-long, um, monthly legislative update, um, referenced the diversion and the tax bills and what's going forward in Washington, D.C., and, uh, I can't say there's not too much report, there's just a lot of unknowns right now in regards to, um, funding and things along those lines. I had a central administration managers' meeting, um, I attended the township officers' meeting, uh, had another meeting yesterday in regards to some space, in regards to public health, and, uh, oh, I, I... Laurie had given me an update, which I did discuss with the, at the township officers' meeting yesterday. And just in case you didn't keep your copy on this, I was going to pass you out another one, because I know, um... I had a central administration managers' meeting, I attended the township officers' meeting, I had another meeting yesterday in regards to some space, in regards to public health, and, oh, I, Laurie had given me an update, which I did discuss with the, at the township officers' meeting yesterday, and just in case you didn't keep your copy on this, I was gonna pass you out another one, because I know Chairman Campbell does ask for this on a periodic basis, and. This is kind of the expenses and revenues from last year.
Thank you.
Which you can hang on to. And I guess you can, we went over that a little bit yesterday at the meeting, but you can go over that to your leisure, if you have any questions, or anything you can certainly ask, so. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Okay.
No, thank you.
We will be adjourned.